Welcome to the town acting planning board meeting for May fifteenth, two thousand twenty five at six p.m.
I'll stand for the plan.
Okay, we do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys have a chance to.
I do.
I'm just proofing them now, but it's not too much. I'll make a motion we approve the minutes from May first as written. I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed?
Old business we have none, new business Acton Solar LLC, San Pedro, Tax Map, two, three, four lot zero four four, site plan review, extension requests.
Welcome back again.
Thank you, thank you. I love the cameras running. Jennifer, we're CPM Horror Engineers, representing Acton Solar LLC. And I had submitted a letter just to request that we extend the approval that was originally granted on December twenty twenty three. This would be our second extension. I was here last in November. Our first six month extension expires sometime in June, so that's why we're here today. Originally requesting six months, I know that we had talked about this at the last meeting. And due to the ordinance and conversation around the ordinance, we weren't able to come to a conclusion here. But I wanted to ask if a twelve month extension would be allowed or if a third extension would be allowed beyond the second six month extension. The developers unable to start construction likely this year. It's still a little bit up in the air, but it's tentative that construction will start early spring twenty twenty six. That's where we're at. I wanted to see if you all were open to that. The developer asked that I ask those questions, so I just wanted to bring it up to the table. If there's any more information you need there, I'm happy to explain. It sounds like they're going through funding and they're continuing with their environmental reviews that are needed for federal funding. So they're still going through that process now.
So Gavin, as you're probably looking right now, the board has ability to grant two six, it says two six month extensions.
Right, and this would be the second.
This would be the second.
Yeah.
There's nothing in there that pertains to an extension longer than six months or what to do after the six months.
Yeah.
I kind of explained to her over the phone, just like a conversation that what we just dealt with with the solar, I mean with the storage units where his thing had lasted, but our ordinance never changed and we were able to just amend his plan. I'm not suggesting that route, but I just, if they don't, they're not able to construct construction, I'm really not sure how to start go forward with it all.
Right.
Because it sounds like they need at least a one year, one year extension.
They just have to go through the process again, but it would be.
I don't know that they have to go through the whole process, but they can come in and act like we did. We amended the, if our ordinance doesn't change, we haven't talked about making any changes to solar. We did a pretty good change first time. You would just come in for an amended site plan and it almost pretty much starts over.
Okay.
So you get your one year again, in a sense.
Alright, and we would have to submit the full application package.
Yeah, I mean, but they're not gonna break it, I don't believe that they'd be breaking it down like, more or less, you've already got an approved thing. They've already set certain conditions on it. I think you had explained to me on the phone that you guys were actually gonna do some testing.
Yeah.
That we had talked, that the board had talked about in the past.
Yeah, so there is good news there. As part of this environmental review, they're doing a second environmental assessment, which includes soil testing on site. So they're gonna be grabbing three or so samples and just doing some basic baseline tests, sending those to the lab. And then it will be documented and that can be sent to the town. It's gonna be public knowledge since that's gonna be part of their federal funding process, so it'll all be submitted.
Chris, if you don't mind, I kind of give my recommendation, just do the six month right now and then, because it's what our ordinance tells us to. And then we'll deal with the amended plan after, which will give them their extra time that she has.
Do with that, Gavin? I'm just reading the actual verbiage on.
On that soil, just on the soil testing, buy a little time and talk, so it's not boring for people. They do it at the beginning, will they do it after it's decommissioned as well or?
Um, for the assessment, I don't know if they're required to. This is part of an initial process.
Okay.
That they're doing now, that should be done in the next couple of months, so.
Just a question.
Yeah, yeah, I guess they're looking for pesticides, lead and arsenic.
What's it gonna hit, because it's in that old asphalt and anything?
Pesticides potentially, yeah, that's what their concern is.
Does that include our PFAs?
Um, it does not. That was not recommended by the folks conducting the study.
They're just, are they just trying to get what's in the soil because of maybe the contaminants that were placed by any kind of pesticides of some sort? So that they can't link them together? We had solar panels putting off this, you know what I mean? Is it something like that?
That's as far as I understand, yeah. I don't know if it's necessarily proactive against the solar itself, but it's just a routine site assessment prior to funding a project of this size.
Yeah, it's good to establish a base, baseline where you want it to begin.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna ask about the PFAs, because I know that they do treat the surface of solar panels with PFAs to preserve them. And it was just, you know, if we had an initial, if that was part of the initial test and we tested later, we'd be able to make a comparison to see how much may have come off of the solar panels during the twenty or thirty years that they were on.
I understand, but there's no indication that there's PFAS on any of the material. And I know that for one of our conditions, we're required to submit some of our documents about the panels, so that would be in there. There's no PFAS on any of the PV panels that I've reviewed in the past and the studies that I've reviewed and the study that we had submitted over a couple of years ago. It didn't mention PFAS in there, but I understand maybe some other types of solar might have that. Whereas this type of panels would not.
Do you have the information of what kind of panels they are at this time?
I do.
I remember before, it was kind of, you were like, oh, we're not sure what type exactly the developer's gonna use.
So they're going with, it's called crystalline silicon. So that's a very common photovoltaic panel now. And I know I submitted this study back in twenty twenty three when you guys had had questions about that, so I'm happy to send it over again if you guys wanted to read it again later this year or anytime soon. But that's, that's available information that I have.
That sounds like the main constituent in the panels.
It's silicon is the main component, yeah.
Is it, what is the manufacturer's name, do you know?
I don't know all that yet. I know that's something that we were gonna be getting to later, once we have. I didn't know what's for cluster construction.
Yeah, well, maybe you could bring it in in six months.
Actually.
Yeah.
For that part.
Yeah, never know, never know. Alright, well, yeah, I was just looking at page one hundred and ten and one hundred and eleven. So. I guess I'll make a motion that we grant a six month's extension for Acton Solar LLC, San Pedro, Tax Map, uh, thirty four lot zero four four.
Can I make an amendment to that Gavin?
Oh, sure.
That is the second six month amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Second? All in favor?
Uh, let's get, you second the motion.
Yeah, I'll second the motion with that.
That it is the second.
That is, that it is the second six month amendment.
Well, that's a.
Alright.
Yep.
Well, Dave?
Okay, thank you. We'll be in touch soon.
Let me see.
I thought you were asking, you confirmed that it was the second.
Me too.
That's really what I thought you were doing.
I just want the verbiage.
No, that's a good idea. I just, I overlooked that.
Alright, next, this would be public comment.
My turn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just state a name, please, thank you.
I'm Julie Vannell, and my husband and I have been Acton residents on Mann Road for forty seven years. And I'm concerned about the extent and scope of gravel extractions in our neighborhood, in the neighborhoods around Acton, especially near residential dwellings. So I'd like to propose in addition to the current zoning ordinance under mineral extraction industry performance standards, section five point nine, point two, point D, point one, to add a minimum distance from any current residential dwelling. So currently, the minimum distance is one hundred feet from a property line, but there's no distinction for distance from residential dwelling. And the minimum distance can be a discussion. I would, you know, I think it's best for you people to, you know, whatever your comments are. I think the distance maybe five hundred feet would be reasonable, but again, I'd like you, you know, the planning board would have some more experience than I do. So it would be great to have your, your input. So the Acton CEO has the most complaints and spends considerable time with Acton residents who are close to mineral extraction activities. This is because currently the ordinance specifies only that an extraction operation needs to be more than one hundred feet from the property line, with no distance distinction noted for homes with smaller lots and therefore can be quite close to extraction activities. Mineral extraction can be very noisy, dusty and disturbing. We all moved to Acton for the open space, the quiet, clean environment and the ability to appreciate nature and these attributes of our town. I think the planning board should consider if these attributes are being threatened and consequently the character of our town and the property values in general. Our town has areas with much higher population density than it had in the past. In the past, there were many homes that were only occupied for a few weeks in the summer that are now occupied for several months or the entire year as, as second homes. All of the, all of southern Maine is also seeing an increase in new home development. Our town is changing and, but we can still have mineral extraction if it doesn't pose a health and environmental noise or traffic issues. So I tried to look up, you know, this is me involved with the planning board and kind of understanding what your role is. And I clear, and I've had a good conversation with Jennifer and Jason and Dave, they've answered my questions very, very thoroughly. But I understand that you need to make sure that everything that you see before you aligns with the, with the community's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances. But in a bigger way, I kind of wonder what, you know, the bigger vision would be. So I looked up small towns in Maine, planning board responsibilities. And most of the things is just rules, how to run a meeting, what the members' participation is supposed to be, what, how are you supposed to document things? But under Winthrop, there was kind of a more general vision, which I think maybe you would also agree with, that you're supposed to also promote public health, safety and the general welfare, as well as share present and future quality of life concerns. So I think that makes sense, and I'm wondering what your opinion of that is. And also if you think that, that extraction activities in our town of Acton should be a little further away from residential dwellings. And I also don't know, do we discuss this now?
Yeah, so I'm just gonna, so Julie, Ms. Vannell's here because.
What is that?
We'll wait for Jason.
Yeah, so Ms. Vannell's here because she came to us with some concerns. She is looking to make some changes, but there's a process. So for amendments to our zoning ordinance, there's four ways that the zoning can be amended. Majority vote by the planning or approved. So an amendment of this ordinance is only, only be adopted by a majority vote at a special regular town meeting. A proposal for an amendment to this ordinance may be initiated by the majority vote of the planning board, the board of selectmen, an individual through a request to the planning board who then may initiate only by a majority vote or a written petition of the number of votes equal to at least ten percent of the vote cast in the last gubernatorial election. So she's here hoping to get the planning board's approval or something like that. And it might, doesn't have to happen tonight, but she's looking to have a conversation with you guys to see if you'd be interested in an amendment to this five point, five point nine, point two, D, point one.
Which is page fifty five.
Yep. And her, as she stated, her proposal, in addition to the hundred foot property setback, it would be also a five hundred, this is her proposed number as of right now, five hundred foot setback from any current residential structures. Not like somebody can't just go plop in one and say, okay, you gotta move your pit.
Yeah.
Like, so if there's somebody established and it's, it's a single family dwelling, not a, not a shed, then it would be a five hundred foot minimum setback from a house. That's her proposal.
Yep, that sounds good.
So would that be for all existing or all? Upcoming.
If you can't go backwards.
Right, right.
Yeah, so it would be for any new approved ones. You know, any that up and coming, yeah. We don't have anything in front of us right now, so if something got happened and moved into a, either next year's town vote or a special meeting, I know we have some special meetings. Depends on how fast, if the board feels that it's something that needs to be done right away, you know, we always can make these meetings, but it's just here for discussion right now. It'd be nice, I wish, unfortunately, we had some people not make it tonight, so we didn't get a full board in. Is it something that you guys are interested in having a discussion with the rest of the board?
Certainly.
Yeah, we're, we're discussing with the rest of the board.
Only thing that pops to my mind right initially would be, would this limit someone from building a dwelling where they wanted to? Say they wanted to build two hundred feet from, if they want, they had a law or an existing law that was next to a mineral extract.
I think you could word it, it was up to the owner's discretion if they wanted to build something, but it's just, I think you can limit it to that. If they were doing extraction, all extraction hadn't, would have to be that five hundred feet back, I mean, but I.
But it's existing dwelling, not future dwelling.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can have it one way or not the other, because if you sell that property to someone else down the road, you know, they may not want, you know, obviously they don't have to buy it, but, but what I'm saying is, you know, I, I don't think you could have it both ways.
What do you mean by both ways?
So you're saying that if a new gravel pit goes in and it can't be within five hundred feet of the dwelling?
Right.
So if somebody owns a piece of property, they should not be allowed to build within five hundred feet of that gravel pit.
I see what you mean.
That's kind of loud and poking out.
Or it would be there, they could, if that's what they choose.
And that's what I'm saying, I don't think.
That's too gray, you think?
I think it's a good discussion.
Yeah, that's too gray, I see.
There is.
It's kind of like having your cake and eat it too, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, yeah, it's okay, I can build there if I want to, but no, you can't have your gravel pit within five hundred feet regardless. So.
That, just the first thing that came to my mind.
Yeah, I think, I think future, I think, I think you're still gonna stick with existing, existing dwelling. And anything in the future, you could, you could put a house closer, but that's your, again, that's, that's, this is to protect the homeowner. Not to protect, not anything to do with the gravel pit. So if you want to be closer to the, to the gravel extract, you could be closer.
That's, yeah, that's, that's the only point, biggest point of discussion I see, other than, you know, whether or not bring this thing to town. You know, would be, what are some of the implications of this for the residential landowner? You know, I don't know how that works exactly. I mean, you could see you have an existing pit and you have a house that's, you know, now five hundred and fifty feet away. Okay, so the pit could only expand fifty feet that direction. Now that's all clear and makes sense, but say, you know, the pit's looking to expand.
Isn't it, isn't a permit though given for a certain area? And if they want to extend it, they'd have to get another permit, right?
No, it's usually. Reclaim and revegetate and move on to another area. So like, a lot of places you'll get five to ten acres. And then they're allowed, they might, they might have certain phases with their.
I understand, okay.
It's not like they get a permit for the whole of their property.
Right, at one time, okay, I understand.
And then, once they deal DEP too, then they're able, you know, revegetate, then they're able to try and get another.
I understand.
So she, she originally came in and was, was asking for, started out with, you know, a certain setback from the property line, like a greater setback from the property line, from the hundred to whatever, but the issue wasn't the setbacks from property, it's, it's the, the issue right now is the proximity to residential structures and people's livelihood, I guess.
In the buffer too.
In the buffers, yeah.
What the buffer consists of.
So besides that one point, how do the three of you feel about the idea of protecting a residential dwelling from being too close to an extraction, mineral extraction pit?
I, I think that's a good idea in, in the case of, like I was saying, the existing dwelling, the edge of the pit's now five hundred and fifty feet away, they could only move so much closer. And I understand the logic in that.
So I don't think any of you live within a hundred feet of a gravel pit right now, and I do. So this is one of the reasons why it's important. And I don't want, it's, this isn't about anyone individual, I'm just thinking about, there's other people in Acton that are.
Yeah, yeah.
And it comes down to health as well, I get, I understand the whole health aspect and whatnot.
No, I think we're gonna bring it to the rest of the board, I think it's a good idea, it's just not, I, there's a little bit more thinking to be done with the verbiage than just throwing five hundred in.
Oh, yeah, and that's, that's what I would, I would hope that you, you people would have the threat verbiage. I'm, this is not my expertise, but if you feel like it's important, then I think, that's what I want to hear, that you think it's important enough that it could be a discussion.
Oh, absolutely, I do think it is.
Our town's changing, you know, it's much more densely populated. And the, you know, the, when the, when you, the ordinance from nineteen eighty nine, nobody ever envisioned the scale of the equipment that's being used now, the extent of the gravel pits. There, it's nothing like anyone imagined decades ago.
But you also, also on the other side, and I, and I'm, I'm not, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here. You also have to understand that these people that own these gravel pits didn't envision the amount of population coming in either.
It's true.
So.
It's true.
You know, it's due diligence on both parts.
True, I can see that, yep. And there are, there are gravel operations in our town that are kind of not in the middle of nowhere, but they're far enough from residents that it's not an issue, Jason doesn't have an issue with them. But there are, you know, and it could happen again, that there is more gravel pits that are opened that are close to residents. And, you know, I, I hear people talking in other towns, that, you know, Acton, just one big gravel pit. And it's, it doesn't, that doesn't bode well. Yes, we're, there's a lot of people making money from the gravel, the resources, the natural resources that are being taken out of our, our town. But, you know, there's, there's a limit to what should be, should be happening close to residents. That's my opinion, and I hope that you can understand that and support it. So the only issue that you see at this point is the other two members have to have a discussion with. And then verbiage, future building versus current building.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's something that we're all gonna sit down and we're gonna, you know, go through it thoroughly and make sure.
Is there anything else that I can do to help the cause?
I think on the June fifth meeting, when we come back on the fifth, will be a discussion at the end of our meeting, I think. Just to, we'll bring these guys in, if you, you're more than welcome to come back.
Okay, yeah, and I'll actually be out of town, I think, June fifth, but maybe someone else could come in.
Well, we can usually present your ideas to the rest of the board, I don't think we'd make a decision of any sort that, not even be more like, what do you think, thinking over.
And even if they do decide to move forward, there's a process, we have to have a public hearing, we, there's, you know, we've, we've got.
Yeah, it just, this is the first step, otherwise there's lots of steps ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're taking into consideration and have a good discussion with the rest of the numbers at the next meeting.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
So we had Gavin attended and so did John, we attended the zoning board of appeals meeting that was held on, was it Wednesday? Last week, last Thursday? Yeah, they were gonna come in tonight, but we couldn't really get full clarification. They were trying to speak with an attorney about how to move forward with it all. But they're gonna be coming back in front of the planning board, it sounds like, for the cluster subdivision and then getting variances on the standards of the cluster subdivision, is kind of what I took out of that one. It just kind, I, I left that confused, more confused than I was before I went into it, so we'll, we'll kind of work with it. And we're waiting for, they were supposed to be here tonight, but we took them off the agenda because they never had the ability to have that conversation. How to be guided forward and what the, our town attorney was telling, how, telling them how to move forward, so. They should be, hopefully back in, I put them on the next agenda already for the fifth, if they make it in, then, then, then good. Might have a, not sure how far, how close she is to coming, but there might be a daycare coming in front of the board for approval.
One week soon or?
I don't know, no one, you know. So, other than that, that was what I was supposed to tell you last week, and I couldn't remember what it was, was the zoning board of appeals meeting was. that was what I was supposed to tell you last week, and I couldn't remember what it was, was the zoning board of appeals meeting was Thursday.
Yeah, so cluster subdivisions, page thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one in the subdivision. And I'm just going to talk about this document on the case.
Okay, I was gonna say, it was good, can't, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to point out number four, number five here on page forty. And these are net residential equals shall be calculated by taking the total area of the lot and subtracting in order the following. I just want to point out these A through, you know, C and C one through six in the subdivision. Because these are all constraints to cluster subdivision.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I'm assuming that they're coming in with all the information because.
Yeah.
I know, I know what I'm not really talking about, but they're going to be asking for waivers or variances from a lot of these particular areas. Because pretty much in a nutshell, at the zoning board of appeals, where it specifically states in the critical rule, any subdivision is greater than three, you know, any lots, any more, any time there's more than three lots created, there needs to be a cluster subdivision. We, we kind of, I, excuse me, misguided them because I was told that they needed to go to the ZBA to get relief from that part of the ordinance. But it, there are the, the guidance from the town attorney that it's not true. You can't change the ordinance, the ordinance can't, where it says cluster subdivision, you can't go and give them a, a traditional conventional subdivision. Even though if they meet the requirements, they still have to come in for the cluster subdivision. But then at that point, they have the ability to go to the ZBA and ask for relief for certain standards. So pretty much, they're going to be asking for relief for almost every standard that a cluster subdivision has, which is just how it has to be. Because he says that the ZBA nor the planning board can just take the verbiage, twist it, and give them what they want. So that, it's still going to be, it's going to be a cluster subdivision, but at the end, it might end up being, looking more like a tradition, if they get the approvals from, or, or the variances. But they got to go through the process and go in that route. And that's kind of what I took out of it, right?
They have to see what they can do.
Right, and then they got, they still have to present it to the board, and the board has to say, well, this is what we, this is what we're allowed to do. And then when they don't, they're not.
Vote on it.
Right, we can't vote on it, exactly. And if they say, okay, well, we're going to seek relief from that standard, then they're going to go back to the ZBA, plead their case with the ZBA, then come back, it's going to be a bunch of back and forth, you know, so. We're going to try to, hopefully, they come into the next meeting with all their numbers and calculations so that we can tell them, or they can understand where, where it's going to lie, where they're going to be, so then they can go back with all the stuff that they need, not, we don't want to deal with one thing, then go back, and then one thing, and they go back. So I'm hoping that it can go smoothly, but there's going to be a bunch of jumping back and forth. Other than that, that's all I got for you right now.
I had, I had a question, just nothing to do with this. Somebody created, you know, they sold a lot that was on a, a road that was not town maintained or up to town standard. When, so that they can go ahead and sell this supposedly non-conforming lot if the road frontage isn't up to standard, but then.
If it's a deeded right of way, I mean, you'd have to see if it's still a right of way. They, it might have to be brought up to standard, but it does, if, I believe, it would still be a right of way.
So if they could go ahead and sell the law, if somebody could go ahead and sell the law. But then, when they, when the buyer comes in and wants to get a building permit, is that when the two fifty comes into play?
Well, you can't create a non-conforming lot for our ordinance, so you can't just say, so like, if you don't have any road frontage and, but you have a deeded right of way, I can't give you a building permit until that deeded right of way has been built up to its standards. So like, if you, a lot of people will say, okay, I'm selling you two acres.
Time of sale, it's at the time of.
Time of building permit.
That's correct, that's what I was wanting, because it's like, people could be selling non-conforming lots, supposedly non-conforming, all they want, but then when it's a building permit, they catch it.
But it has to have that deeded right of way or some sort of, of verbiage in it that allows it to have road frontage. So we don't use specifically just the term road frontage, we use right of, we use the, the words right of way. You know, so if you're looking at your setbacks.
They could make a driveway that was two hundred and fifty feet.
Right, you, people make private roads that meet the town, you know, that just, they get surveyed, I have to put it into the systems and.
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be continuous with a town right of way. They could just upgrade their driveway to two hundred and fifty feet, let on to a right of way that wasn't up to standard and then.
Yeah, well, then they would have, if it's, if it's no longer has road frontage, I think they have to have, and you go and create some kind of right of way. I think people that are tied to that property or Butters or whatever owner uses that road has to sign off on it. Like, you might change deeds, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent.
You see what I'm saying, can there be a gap in the, in the road that's up to town standard?
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I just, we just did one with Orchard Road, because Orchard Road comes off, off of Milton Mills and it also is on Gaudy. Somebody brought, you know, they brought it up to standards and then created a driveway off it, but then it stops, it's kind of like Huzzy Hill, where you can go down and then you can come up, you can't get through.
Right.
But it's still, I don't know if, if, if it's actually discontinued, it's not maintained by the town anymore. I know Orchard Road is, but it's still a right of way through there on my GIS program. And I think Huzzy Hill still might be a right of way through. So if somebody wanted to.
If you're planning on.
Yeah, so, yeah, you would bring it up to town standards, and town standards is sometimes like, if it's a private road, it's a glorified, yeah, driveway, I mean, it's just twenty foot wide, you know, you gotta take out certain materials and bring in some, you know, other materials that meet spec, but, yeah. It can, there is ways to do that, yeah.
I was just, yeah, my initial question was, which you answered, was just, do they, they don't catch, we don't catch that at time of sale of the law.
So, no, a lot of people.
The building permit.
Exactly, I don't, like, people create lots of time, I never see them.
Right.
What happens is, they might, one, might pop up on the GIS program, and all it is, is somebody deeded off a lot. Like, you broke off a lot, gave it to Chris, I don't know you did that, but it gets registered and they register deeds. Our assessors do that and all, and all, so that, yeah, that's how it really works.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Tact it.
All in favor?